Meeting in Monona Grove School Board to order at 6:02 on August 14, 2024. Has there been a declaration of public notice? Great, thank you very much. Do we have any public appearances today? Great. All right, so I will move forward to the consent agenda.
I move a parole of the consent agenda as presented.
We'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Next, we'll go to recognitions.
Yes, is this, okay, it's already on. So, we have had conversations about how can we move from celebration of excellence and recognition, being about me reading about amazing things that are happening in the system, and really think about how do we bring some of those gifts and talented, like, things that people are doing into the boardroom as a celebration? And so, would love to have kids here tonight, but it is summer, so it is a little tricky. However, we do have a lot of staff in the district doing some really amazing things. And so, I would like to invite Jessie Starr and Angie Fossil up to the table. And they're going to share what they were able to present at a national level about work that they're doing here in Monona Grove. And just really proud of them and proud of the work that they've been forwarding in the community and thinking about how they shared that at a national level. And we look forward to doing more celebrations of excellence around what teachers and students are creating and doing in the district. So with that, I would turn it over to them to share about their presentation and then open it up for questions that the board might have.
Well, thank you, and thank you for inviting us tonight and recognizing this. So Angie and I had the opportunity this year to present at the National Association of Elementary School Principals National Conference in Nashville. This year, the conference was combined with the National Association of Secondary School Principals. So we had principals from elementary to middle to high school all meeting in Nashville, and it was just a great opportunity to be around people in like-minded jobs. So Angie and I attended the previous year, and we got a lot out of that conference, and it was great. We sat in sessions, we learned a lot, but we also reflected saying, we could do this, and we have a lot of great things that we could share as well. So in the fall, we wrote a proposal on something that we thought would be impactful to share at a national level, and we were a little surprised and excited that we were accepted.
We weren't surprised.
So, you guys have a copy of the presentation. And our goal, we wanted to present around fostering student identity. And in that presentation, there's a quote from Goldie Muhammad that talks about kids knowing themselves, or young people knowing themselves as well as others who may be different from them, and teaching them to love and live with differences. And I think that is like the epitome of our work here in our district, is to create young people who are that. And we're proud of the work that our staff has done in that area, and it starts with building their own identity and seeing themselves and others. And so, really, we wanted to just highlight and show that to other people and for them to take away ideas that they can take back to their own district. We talked about the importance of the work that we did, that it was parallel student and staff, right? The staff were growing their own identity and learning about that piece along with being able to take that and work with students. And that work helped everybody grow together. We showcased the windows and mirrors work that we, I know we've talked with the board about. We talked about it with staff, we've talked about it when we are doing our curriculum reviews, that that's an important concept in our district, and we wanted to highlight that. We talked about the structures for collaboration around that, that we have created within our district for infusing the identity work and not making it a silo, but infusing it into our curriculum and our teaching. And then also how we, like, the avenue that we do a lot of that work, which is our morning meetings, our classroom community building meetings. And so, we kind of talked about all of those things and showcased that. And then we shared the impact that that work had from student-driven groups that have been created within our buildings, and then also just like classroom projects and work that they have done as a school community. So, that's kind of a big overview of what the presentation was. I would say one of our biggest takeaways was that we appreciate so much the work that we've done as a district and the support we have of this school board for doing that work. Everything from our mission and vision to the equity statement that was collaboratively created, to the non-negotiables that have been, you know, adopted as part of that board policy. Like, we feel privileged to be able to do that work and have your support. And so, we just also want to thank you for that, because we are, we're fortunate that we're able to create a system where we can do this with our kids, because it's important.
Yeah, and a couple of takeaways that I had. Number one, it was another example of the amazing leadership of Angie Fossil. You know, like, I had the luxury of standing up there and talking about systems that we did at Winnequa, but they were systems that were created far before I showed up. And so Angie really did a lot of the hard work and the staff there at Winnequa, and I had the privilege, and it was what brought me to this district, to do some of those works. But that hard work of getting that started was really started by Angie. She doesn't get credit enough, so I also want to give her that credit.
Well, everyone needs a hype man.
Exactly.
But yeah, I mean, poured into me for two years as an AP, and then she continues pushing me even for this opportunity. So just grateful to continue working in partnership with her. And then for us too, like, we got to stand up there and talk about the work that was done by a lot of people within our district. And so Angie mentioned the work by the board, but also, you know, other administrators. Reed Foster and Emily Foster were also with us there, and they were able to sit in and be present. And it was just amazing that all four elementary principals were there together as we shared that work and administrators across the district every day. And we're oftentimes the ones that are on the front lines of that and sometimes answering angry emails and things like that too. And it's hard work, but it's awesome with that dedication. And then the staff, the teachers, the SEAs, the EAs, who all buy into the work. And we can present this in PD, we can talk about the why and why it's important. It's really those relationships in the classrooms and those teachers buying in, knowing how important it is that students see themselves in the work and see themselves in their classroom communities, because we know that student achievement is directly tied to that. So it's just another opportunity to highlight the amazing people we have within our district that makes it possible for us to go and brag at a national level about the work that we're doing here, so. Yeah.
Questions from the board? Susan?
The other thing that we've been able to see, that it's wonderful to have a presentation, because so many of us have seen so many of these pieces. But again, you had to be so modest. I don't know how you chose the things. So one of the neatest things in the whole world, there's really two that just come right up. And one is, you go and you watch a music program at the schools, and all the kids are participating. And they're all playing, you know, a flute or an instrument of the same weight, together and blending and making sounds. So you teach collaboration and learning in a way that teaches them this working together. The other thing that's fascinating to go see is the art show. And when the students do that portrayal of themselves in different kind of things, I'm trying to remember some of the stuff that, they would use a bass, you know, something as silly as a tennis shoe or something, and then they'd build their face off that. And they were all positive. I mean, you didn't look and say, I wonder what this. In particular, if you have any mental health background at all, you can see those things and those kind of. And you've done a wonderful job of helping other people see what, over the years, we've been able to see you do. That's amazing.
Can't thank you enough. Questions or comments from the board?
I just wanted to say thanks for representing the district so well. Yeah.
There was a lot of learning, but it was great to show off the work of the staff in the district, so.
And I have to say, I have colleagues from around the nation who are texting me and like, we just saw people from your new district, and you should be really proud. So that's always great to hear from people from other states and around the country who leaned into what you're doing and took that away, so, thank you.
I agree, thank you again.
Yeah, and thanks for being our very first celebration. And we look forward to collaborating with the teachers and building principals and families to bring more people into the boardroom and talk about really great things, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Are there other recognitions? I don't have my board decks up, so. Okay, correspondence and announcements. Any? No? All right, administrative reports.
The first one that we have is the final summer school report. And there is an attachment in there that gives a brief overview of the summer school. I think the most notable takeaway is that we continue to climb to recap the amount of students who attended summer school prior to the pandemic and when that year that summer school was kind of virtual. So this year, we, before the pandemic, I'm going to make the font bigger on here. We had around 1,200 students participate in the summer school enrollment in 2019, and this year we were 1,100. And so, really made a nice recovery of that. It was great. Summer school was the only thing happening the first week of July when I started. And so, got the opportunity to meet lots of the teachers, see kids, and get into those different buildings. And it's a really great experience. And what I was so impressed about is the majority of the people that staffed summer school are our very own staff. And when you think about kids keeping connections and showing up and being willing to do that from a staffing perspective, is really great. So it was really fun to see, and it was fun to see some of the teachers that talked about how they taught a class that's really different than what they do during the school year, and just to have that experience, so it was really great. So we continue to look at, you know, how can we continue to grow that summer school program? Not just from academic, you know, and enrichment part, but then also what are the just the fun things that kids do in summer? So we look forward to continuing to do that. So I open it up to any questions.
Questions at all about summer school? Yes, Susan?
I would just say, Tanya, I just want to thank you again for the report. It's just really helpful, because people will say to us, how many students did you have in summer school this summer? And we'll go, sorry, but to have the numbers and the material laid out like this and to understand where the sites were, so if we get feedback on the sites for any reason, we have this information and know where to send them for the responses. But this is really helpful, I really appreciate it.
Great, yeah.
Other questions or comments about summer school?
I would just add that my feedback around summer school is always what I hear from the youth when, you know, I'm out in the community or my kids are hanging out with their friends and continuously talk about how fun it is, right, what a good time they're having, how much they're enjoying it. And so, I just, I think that's testament to the quality of work that is happening there, so. You know, when kids want to go to school in the summer, you know you're doing something good, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Rachel.
To, I also really appreciate how the enrichment programs are really fun for the kids at a very low cost. It's usually just, you know, small material costs. So it's like summer camp for very little money. So I think it's a great opportunity for kids to, who may not be traditionally loving to go to school, to have a chance to just have fun at school.
I also got some good feedback this year from families too, I'm thinking about it, around the gap that got closed with playground camp, which I think last year was a little bit of a challenge with that gap between the end of summer school and then the beginning of playground camp, particularly for families that are working during the day, and how helpful and beneficial that was to be able to just have that kind of extended experience for kids. So hopefully, we'll be able to continue that next year.
Yeah, so we'll sit down with Lisa Hype and Maureen, her administrative assistant, who really works on the scheduling of all of that and think about what really worked well, what are opportunities, how can we continue to expand it? We have beautiful facilities, and it's just great when kids can be in them in the summer and be able to have that engagement, because summer can get long. I know there's parents that are real ready for their kids to get into a routine, and so it's a good opportunity during the school year.
All right, great, thank you. All right, next up, superintendent's report.
Yeah, so I wanted to just share a few things. We have been having conversations in the community around, with feedback around transportation. I know that this past year, the transportation zones where families could buy a seat, the cost was changed from 200 to 400. And I think one of the things that I just want to just share is, you know, people were asking questions about, was the price raised to create revenue? You know, what did that look like? And so, have had some really great conversations with some community members. I met a group of moms this morning for coffee to talk about this. And, you know, really sharing with them, it costs about a little under $900 per student for a butts on seats, right? And so, having that conversation, so moving to the $400, you know, for people to buy a seat is still part of it, right? It's more, but it's still subsidizing that full price. And so, that was really helpful for them to understand. The other thing that is notable and something that we want to keep in the back of our minds is the last traffic study was done in 2021, and Cottage Grove has really changed in some of those areas, particularly that school road area where the QuickTrip went in there. Living in that community, I now realize people cut through that neighborhood, which I find weird, because I get lost every time on a dead-end road. So, but that's changed. And so, have had conversations with the village board president about some of the feedback. And then also will reach out to the sheriff's department, because they do support some of those, looking at those different areas. So I think that will be important. And then as we're reorging, we'll have to think about the neighborhood schools. That will change things a little bit. So don't necessarily love the idea of a new transportation traffic study, because they're very, very expensive. But how can we also look at what we already have, look at what's changed, and think about what makes logical sense from a safety aspect, but also is fiscally responsible? So any questions?
Questions about that? About that? Yes, Susan?
So what's our thought about, again, with the growth in the building in Cottage Grove right now? It just seems like almost you have to study that every six months, you know? But, so your thought on timing of doing just population studies and how many students, I know you may have to wait until school starts and you see how many kids are coming in from where, but.
Yeah, I don't know if it's necessarily a population study as much as it, how has the layout of the community changed with more businesses? The other thing that I think has changed is there's denser population of humans in certain areas. So the apartment complexes that have been put in right off of N that then lead into that neighborhood, that changes the in and out. So it's a little bit more about that part, you know, talking with, you know, were all the recommendations done about stop signs and yields and all of those kind of things? So working with that group, it's going to take a little time, but continuing to work with that.
And you watch that growth on the other side of Cottage Grove Road, you know, toward that whole Villas area. And then you look at the growth because of the schools, not knowing what the growth will be in that area once they start building the Amazon project. So again, just knowing and understanding that we're continuing to study that, that gives us a really nice way to respond to the community. I appreciate that.
It's going to have to be fluid. You know, I don't think you're going to be able to run a five-year gap. I don't know if Kristin has any thoughts to add on that from a operations perspective? No? Okay. So we'll continue to work through that and monitor that, especially as we think about the littles in that area. Speaking of the reorganization, the reorganization K-12 committee will get back together soon and write up their findings from the committee. And then those will be in the boardroom in September for consideration for this board as far as what will kind of the divining line look like of which neighborhood school you go to? Elizabeth, I don't know if you have anything you want to share about that work?
No, I was, I think I've shared previously at an update that I really appreciated the work of that committee. It was a great, super-engaged committee. We got a lot of work done in a very short amount of time. We had, I feel like, really good representation from community and parents, as well as Peter was there as a committee member as well. And so the goal is to get as many committee members to the board meeting in September as possible, so that you can meet them, so they can share about our recommendations. So we're pretty excited about it. I don't know, Peter, do you have anything you want to add?
Pretty good.
That's it?
Well, thank you both and with Katie for leading that. Lots of positive feedback.
Yes, Susan?
Do we have posted anywhere? One of the questions I've repeated, repeatedly gotten recently, because we have the group of kids that are now signed up for 4K and we're bringing in this whole new group of new families, lots of new families. One of the questions they have is, what's your time plan for that? And I just wondered if it was posted anywhere, so I could at least reference them to that. I mean, I can answer the question, but I just.
Yeah, so we have the website that's around the 4K2 planning that has all the documentation that's come prior to today. It'll also have the report on there, and it gives a timeline around the phasing. So if you remember, Susan, phase one was like getting the boundaries set. And then we'll work on the operational plan of, you know, how we're moving into those pieces, staffing, all of that kind of stuff. And that's, that website is still up and available.
Yeah, I think they were just more interested in what years are you going to do the implementation, rather than, again, they're trusting that group to do the process. So just, you know, again, if it's somewhere that's very easy, if they have to read through all the material, it may be more difficult.
No, it should be pretty straightforward. I'll send you the link. But the goal for implementation is the 25, 26 school year. So not this school year, but next school year.
Exactly.
Okay, but I will, let me write myself a note, because I'll let myself.
That's great, because then I can just send it.
Yep, and you're welcome to, to redirect them to me too, if they have any questions.
Yes, I haven't done that, yep. Yep, I said, plus, if you have any questions about the committee.
Elizabeth, happy to answer them. Great, thank you, Susan.
And I think the last thing that I would just want to share is I released my first 30 days of time in the district. It was amazing. Spent a lot of time with our district administrators, really getting to know what's the work that's been working on, what's the data look like, what are some of those policies and procedures? It's been wonderful to be with the building principals and spend some time with them, getting to know them, their schools, kind of what their hopes and dreams are, maybe what some of the struggles are, and thinking about how we can work with those. And then community members and families, and a little bit of teachers, right? July's a little tricky time for teachers. Some have made appointments and met with me, some people, you know, I've met at the schools. Haven't spent as much time with kids as I would love, so look forward to August as students are starting to roll in. I know there are band camps going on at the high school, cheer camp was here today. So different things like that, so that will be really helpful, you know, really to get to understand, you know, kind of what kids are thinking about their education and the community and how they feel about things, but also how they think, you know, like what's important to them and things like that. So excited about that. Did get to read at the Cottage Grove School with Mr. Starr, and we had about 50 people that came, several families that didn't have students that were enrolled in school yet, but that was going to be their future neighborhood school. So it was super fun. So read with the littles, we were going to have popsicles on the playground, but then there was a monsoon that came through. So, but it was lovely. And tomorrow, I'll be at the library here in Monona, doing the same thing here, so. That's super fun. Anytime I can get my hands on kids, it's great. So we will be moving forward with continuing to have more open forum opportunities to talk with families or anybody in the community, teachers, through some roundtables, and really think about, you know, what do people want to share? What do they just really love about Monona Grove and want to make sure that they continue to see happen? So just continuing to build those lines of communication and be visible and available and trying to do a lot of listening, so that I can learn and plan, so. It's been great.
Yes, Susan?
So have you, and see, they're probably not meeting right now. Have you had a chance to meet with the PTOs or?
Not yet, we'll do that when school starts. Well, I shouldn't say that. I think Winnequa has one on Saturday morning we're meeting. Everyone's nodding at me. Yes, Saturday morning, I will be there in shorts, because it's Saturday.
In the ice cream scoop, that's fun too. Just, it's just because, I cannot tell you, I was at National Night Out last night, the concerts. Even at the concert, this is a senior citizen's friend's concert, you know? All these people had met you. I mean, it's just amazing the places. And then if you went in the National Night Out, all the policemen and the firemen and, you know, so. And I know you've been doing that exact same thing in the other community, because I've gotten the same kind of feedback. It's really absolutely incredible.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do really appreciate the intentionality that you have around connecting with community members, like, at a variety of different, like, interest points, right? Families, staff, you know, community members that live here but maybe aren't as connected to the school district anymore, obviously the municipalities. And just your general communication, I think, has been really great. I appreciated, like, your promptus with your 30-day plan and the video that came out. So thank you for doing that. I think it means a lot.
Happy to be here and continue the work.
Anything else?
No.
Anything else for Tanya? All right, moving on to board reports, we've got a twofer from Susan Manning. Number one, policy committee?
So the policy committee met July 30. And again, I want to thank Janice and Rochelle for, you know, being on there. I do miss you, because now I have to run the meeting. We actually talked about the school resource officer program policy and had quite a bit of discussion about that. Then, basically, and this was wonderful, because Tanya's already done this in her, in her previous school district. But we had a federal law which went into place August 1. And actually, the superintendent has already explained that the law, no matter what our policy says or we've done, if it's different from the statute, the statute will supersede the policy. So, you know, we felt very comfortable with that. But we spent a significant amount of time talking about, you have to write a policy for before the law change and for after the law change. Because if the, if the event occurs, occurred prior to August 1, you have to use the old anyway. So it's quite extensive, and the material was quite extensive. And if, as board members, you were looking at that, just so you know, they've changed the way Neola does it. Neola used to give us a handbook, and you had this handbook, and each of the different policies that were changing had a section in the handbook. So you just went to the handbook. So what they're doing now is every single section of the policy. So how many pages was it, 25? It was huge. So it was just taking lots of changes. So again, and thanking again Peter for the suggestions on the school resource officer program and the superintendent for, and helping us look at which parts to implement. So we'll be looking at those materials today. Now we do the foundation.
Then, yep, switch over to the foundation.
The foundation met Tuesday, and they do reports and announcements first. And Nancy Cooper has actually resigned from the board. They're gone quite a bit of the year, so it's difficult for her to make them up for meetings. But they've added four new board members, and this is amazing. They added Lorene Gage, Jared, Maggie, Jacu, Jacu, Zach? Am I close? I'm sorry, Maggie. But I just call her Maggie, so that makes it easy. And then Katie Moron, and they are now approved members of the board. So it's a really nice mix of additional people, and they've only lost one. So they have really a great board moving forward right now. In the new business, there was a show choir grant request for financial assistance with a show choir performance and college visit to the University of Minnesota. So they're going to do a competition, and then they're also going to the University of Michigan and do a university visit. And $4,000 was approved for that request. And one of the things they're doing right now is they formed a really great committee that is drawing parameters, so that every club or organization affiliated with the school isn't going to look to the foundation for assistance in everything they go to, like a competition or something, that might otherwise be covered by the school district. And what was really also nice was Tanya was there for the discussion and can work with him in drawing those parameters. And so that's going to be a very helpful piece for that foundation. They also approved $140 to the Winnequa PTO from the Snack Pack Program for food for Winnequa families for the summer school program, because they aren't doing the munchies anymore. So that's effectively what they did, and then they all stayed late and signed sponsor requests.
Thank you, Susan. Any questions for Susan about policy or education foundation? Okay, great. Moving on to possible action items, number one, policy revisions. So I'm not sure, Tanya, are you taking this, or is Susan taking?
I think I was going to, correct?
My thought is that generally Dan would go forward with those, talking about the. My, my thought is that generally Dan would go forward with those, talking about the changes that he made because he usually had the minutes for that program.
Great, so we can have Tanya do it.
Yeah, but effectively, if you look at the School Resource Officer, my understanding is that we have integrated the suggestions from the board member and we have talked about those and that Tanya has also discussed those with the chiefs in Cottage Grove and Manona, and those were found accessible and comfortable. So as a committee, we, we approved that. We also approved the other, I think it's 2264 and 66, the, the pre and post drafts for Title IX that basically are non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities. And the thought being, and we, we spent hours, not necessarily in our meeting, but in reviewing this material. I can't, four plus, if not more, because just reading them took that long. I really want to thank the committee for the time and energy and the superintendent that they put into that. Right now, the committee approved these as we're presenting them to the board.
Tanya, is there anything you want to add or any questions from the board?
Yeah, I think just Susan did a beautiful job. Peter's recommendations from the last board meeting, you know, really makes sense. Talked to the chief about them, they're good. As far as policy 2066, the revisions that were made were very much at a organizational level. Basically, it was, they had previously said the Director of Human Resources and we swapped that out for Assistant Superintendent. That was the only change that was made in that revision because as Susan said, we have to have the two policies. This, this federal change did go into effect August 1st. There is a little bit of urgency with getting it passed because there, this is tied to your federal funding. And so I guess I would, we went through it. One of the things is Neola really works really closely with legal counsel. It's Borgman and Clark. So yep, our own legal counsel like gives the input. And then Dr. Olson had also worked with Shannon Lewis ahead of time where there was options for choices, what her recommendations were. And so the recommendations of legal counsel are what we moved forward with. And so I feel like it's, it's very long and thoroughly vetted and I think it looks in, to be in good shape from that perspective, to be in a good place to protect students and staff and also the district from a liability standpoint.
Questions? Yes, Peter?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, thank you for adding those suggestions to the policy. Just a reminder, folks, I, I looked at the best practices for SROs and thought there were some things missing and added those. And the other thing is I, I believe that the drafted policies that we have here should be in the public part of the board docs rather than the administrative section so that the public can see these and comment on these before we adopt them. I just want to, I think that that's a good practice going forward.
I can, I can comment to that. That's one of the things we, we want to do. One of the flaws that we're having with board docs and Neola is when you move them into the public comment parts, all of the highlighting goes away. So there's, I have a call into Neola to find out. And then I thought I could just PDF it and upload it, but when you PDF it. Tish is shaking her head because we spent a lot of time on this.
Poor Tish.
When you PDF it, it'll also, all the suggested drafts go away. So we, we have a tiny bit of logistical.
Like a tech issue.
Silly things we have to work with Neola and then they will be up there. That was our intent. We had talked about that. And so going forward, we'll get there. I have to figure out what is the secret trick.
All right. Even if you put them up without the highlighting, that's better than not putting them up. So this is the draft without highlighting.
It's a great suggestion, Peter.
And that's, and I know that makes it hard because sometimes it's just the one word you changed, you know, the, the, you know, something, some pronoun you changed and, and it's hardly worth attention. But, and it's nice to have that highlighted, but I just think that we should do that because, all right. So thank you very much. Oh, I would move adoption, I would move approval of PO 8407, PO 2266, PO 2264 as presented.
Second that. Great, any further discussion? Great, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion carries, policies are adopted. All right, our last possible action item for the day, I think belongs to you, Kristin, 2024, 2025 lease agreement with American Capital Financial Services Incorporated.
Yes, this lease was first brought to the board at the June meeting, foreshadowing that we'd have the detailed lease agreement at a future meeting. We have that now up for board consideration. It is for laptops for staff and devices for some science labs and supporting equipment.
Questions for Kristin at all? Can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 lease agreement with American Capital Financial Service, Inc.
As presented.
As presented, thank you.
I second it.
For the discussion? Yes.
I have a quick question. Does this, with your previous school district, does this seem pretty competitive and similar to what they tend to run or for leasing equipment like this, do you know?
We didn't lease our technology equipment. We actually budgeted for them in a, you know, planned five-year increments. But a lot of districts do finance depending upon their, the capital that they have available. So it's not unusual in terms of price per piece of equipment. I don't know that I can comment on the individual. I'd have to do more research on that.
And then I, I just have a quick question. So this is for, you said, staff and for science labs, but this isn't for like student devices?
There's some Chromebooks in there as well that would be student advices, devices, yes.
And that I think we need to have a discussion at some point about student use of Chromebooks and how we can get them to be more careful with them. I just going to say, having seen how that works in schools, I think we can do better and maybe save some money.
Thank you, Janice. Any other questions for Kristin?
Well, that does bring, under this lease agreement, what happens when a, when one of these products is damaged?
So we do repair if we can. After the lease is up, we return the equipment to American Capital and depending upon the, how the equipment, status of the equipment, we may get charged. So it is in our best interest to make sure that the devices are taken care of and so that we can return them in the best shape that they can be.
Approximately how much that charges annually?
I know that.
You can say before my time.
No, I, I, looking at expenditures from '23, '24, I saw a line at him for about $27,000 for some, for the lease return cost.
I do think Rochelle's question is a good one in terms of, you know, what, what is the competitive price if we're going to continue to lease out? So it just as we move forward.
Yeah, we'll want to make sure that we look at interest rates and see if there are other options that would be a lower rate or different way to go about financing this equipment in the future.
I also agree with you, Janice, that, you know, if we can avoid damage to them, that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah. And then I'll just throw this idea out. If we had classroom sets instead of each feeling like it was their device, potentially there would be less wear and tear on them.
Similar to how elementary schools do them, I would imagine, because classroom sets for iPad, correct? At the elementary level-ish? Yeah, they're like numbered by the student, right? Yeah. Great, so if there's, is there any other comment or discussion? Great, I know it's been moved and seconded, so we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor or opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. All right, discussion, one discussion item tonight, the annual meeting agenda.
So included, included is the agenda and pretty straightforward template. The annual meeting is set for September 9th at 6:00 PM. As past practice, I know that you have had legal counsel attend from Borgman and Clark and they have already confirmed that they are able to be there. And so we're looking for your feedback on this agenda and anything that you might be looking to adjust. Well, I didn't set this in the meeting. I inherited it.
Did we check the Monday night schedule?
Actually, I did.
Okay.
It is just something to look, remember to look for.
Yes, yes. Well, maybe it can be fast and be done by seven. Any feedback or questions?
Where at the high school? Where at the high school again? I can't.
No, it's, it's here.
Oh, it's here? Okay.
There. 3:10. Yeah.
All right, future meeting dates.
Personnel is scheduled for next Monday, Teaching, Learning Equity Committee on Tuesday, annual meeting on September 9th, and our next Board of Education meeting is September 11th.
Can we talk about 6:00 PM or is it 7:00 PM?
Is it start time?
Well, I mean, we sort of broke with tradition today when, and I know it's noticed starting at 6:00 if we need it, but we typically do the closed session first and start the meeting at 7:00, which is what the public would be expecting. And we can change it. I'm not opposed to the change. It's totally fine with me, but we do want to, I do want to know that this is.
Yeah.
Discussion here that and.
I appreciate.
Board needs to.
I appreciate that, Peter. I will say that I don't anticipate, unless the board is interested in starting at 6:00, us changing our normal practice of starting at 7:00. The nature of our closed business today made it so it made more sense to do it after this meeting. So, but that's more the exception than the rule.
Okay.
But definitely open if folks want to think about changing start times.
All right, well, that's right. Yes, and there's a difference between we're changing things and there we need to make things.
This was a, this is a unique circumstance today for our closed business where it made more sense to do our open business first. But I appreciate the question, though. Anything else? Yes, Susan?
I, I had the same. Actually, I sent an email to Tish, I think, too, and finally went to Tanya as well saying, are we really doing open at 6 o'clock? And understanding it's a public notice, but because of tradition, I think, I was concerned that people, particularly in the public, might see the 6 o'clock and think we're unclosed and come at 7:00. Just changing, so I think it's, I totally support us doing that particularly, I mean, tonight it'll be nice because instead of, you know, trying to see people between, you know, the closed session and us trying to finish at 7:00 when it's a difficult issue, it gives us that leeway. So it probably eventually will work better. But I think we really need to make it more, use a little more press for the public, for them to be aware that the actual open meeting is starting at 6:00.
I, I appreciate that, that comment from both of you and I think you're right. And I think I can take responsibility too for communication to the board. So in hindsight, what I just said to you, Peter, I could have just said to everybody and I did not. So I apologize for the lack of the communication there. And certainly if we have an anomaly like this moving forward, definitely make sure I'm more communicative about like, hey, flipping today, exception, not rule. It'll, it'll make more sense and give us more breathing space because sometimes during our closed sessions, kind of we went close to that 7:00 time. And I didn't want us to feel a sense of urgency around the open session. So I appreciate that feedback and I will take that into account as we move forward. So thank you for it.
And also I appreciate as a board member that we get all the meeting notices and a while ago when I was a teacher, all the staff got all the meeting notices. And I think it was very helpful for staff to get the meeting notices. So I would love it if we would go back to staff, all staff getting the meeting notices for all the things, the committees and the board meetings, so that even if they never look at it, they have the opportunity to know, like, this is the meeting and this is the time and here's what we're talking about.
I do know that there has been a shift in terms of the communication with staff in the newsletter, and so I wasn't sure if that's where those end up now in terms of notices for meetings.
Yeah, if they're scheduled, I think one of the things we could do a better job at is having more routines, scheduled meetings where everybody knows that, you know, teaching, learning and equity is always on, you know, this Thursday of the month. And then we can push those things out in the morning after the board meeting about here's the things that are coming up. I think there's an opportunity for us to get better at streamlining communication because I think as a teacher, you can, you could get a lot of district emails in a day and really thinking about how do we do that in a way that's usable for educators? So it's something I look forward to working with the teachers on what, what would make more sense for how they get information instead of just spamming them.
Yeah, that makes sense. Great, thank you, Janice.
Just want to also note two other things that will be coming up on August 22nd. We will be welcoming the new teacher, the new hire breakfast. That would be at the district office at 7:00 AM. If any of you as the board are, are available to stop by and welcome our new class of new hires, that would be lovely. And then our staff welcome back is August 29th at Manona Grove High School. And that starts at 7:45 to 8:30 would be breakfast. And then at 8:30, we'll have a short program to be able to welcome people back, update some on some information and then give people the opportunity to get back into their classrooms where they want to be to get ready for the following Tuesday. So we'd love to see the board at any of those events.
Thank you. Yes.
I just want to clarify that the board would be welcome for the new hire breakfast and the staff welcome back. Great, thank you.
Let Tish know if you're coming, so in case we have them two of you. All right, anything else or on future meeting dates? If not, can I get a motion to convene into closed session, please?
I make a motion to convene into closed session.